Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission for June the third meeting for 2021 to order, please.
Roll call?
Please.
Mr. Axel?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Geist?
Here.
Ms. Horton?
Here.
Ms. Stalter?
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. We have on here case 822, case 760-7, minutes and adjournment. Motion to accept?
So move.
Was that you, Bob?
Yes.
And so? Mr. Axel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
Okay, first case 822.
All right, if you're ready, I'll read the public hearing notice. The purpose of the hearing is so the zoning commission may review and act on a proposed amendment to the Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution being proposed by the Beaver Creek Township Community Development and Risk Department. The proposed amendment would repeal Article 19.03.10, which requires the township to first obtain approval from any easement holder before issuing permits for structures within easements. And if you're ready, I can read you my staffs. So, a bit of an introduction. The zoning commission recommended a zoning text amendment via Resolution ZC-20-8, which sought to limit the placement of improvements within recorded easements. The amendment added to the resolution as Section 19.03.10 stated the following, you know, no zoning permit issued within any easements essentially. The township trustees, via Resolution passed on January 11th, 2021, voted to accept your recommendation with some slight modifications. They changed, they added the word "recorded," so any recorded easements, and they changed the word "owner" to the holder or controller of the easement. They thought it provided some more clarity. So, the community and development and risk staff began enforcing this new policy 30 days after the trustees passage, which is the time limit required for potential citizen referendum. Enforcement of the language took the form of a separate authorization form that we created, which applicants were required to fill out if their proposed improvement was within a recorded easement. So, they wanted to build a shed or fence or whatever in any kind of recorded easement, they would need the authorization of that easement holder. Staff identified these issues by checking the record plans when something was submitted. So that's how we identified when there was an easement. The authorization forms were then passed along by staff to the entities controlling the easements. Unfortunately, this process kind of fell apart on two different fronts. First, we learned that utility companies charge an insane amount of money, six to eight hundred dollars to grant this, to even look at this authorization, not a guaranteed grant. That's not the kind of barrier we wanted to place on our residents. So, we asked the trustees to put a moratorium on the enforcement of utility easements, while still allowing the enforcement for drainage or any other easement dealing with the flow of water. They did grant us that. They asked us to explore alternate enforcement strategies or revise the language by the first trustees meeting in June. We initially had the goal of keeping the language for drainage easements. We still think and still believe that they're important to protect. However, we have to recognize that we do not have the expertise on staff to make a case-by-case determination for each one. We were relying on Green County Soil and Water and the engineer's office to offer that support. That was based on a memorandum of understanding that we had with them. After, and as you know, there was a support letter from those groups in the original application. So, unfortunately, kind of, I think when the rubber hit the road, they realized what it was going to mean in terms of man-hours. You know, they, maybe they didn't realize how many of these cases we have in the township, I don't know. But we had a series of meetings with the engineer's office and Soil and Water, and basically came, you know, came to the conclusion that we're not going to be able to do a case-by-case review. So, that left us with two choices, either to allow no improvements in any easements or to go back to allowing all of them as we had previously. And for, I think, you know, pretty solid reasons, we decided that we would rather be permissive than deny folks, you know, these things when it shouldn't be an issue. So, that is why we're asking for the repeal of this language. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about that. It really is just a matter of, if we leave it on the books, we can't effectively enforce it without doing an all-or-nothing, and I don't think that's what we're really about here. We want to protect drainage infrastructure, and we want to protect people's homes from possibly being flooded by their neighbors putting up, you know, a privacy fence across the flood route. Unfortunately, we will have to rely on, we'll have to be reactive rather than proactive for these issues. That's just where we sit now.
And homeowners, property owners have the right, while this is in place, to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That is a three hundred dollar application fee for that, and there's no guarantee it would be approved, so.
So that's why we're here before you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about, you know, the policy, about the process that led us here, but those are the facts.
So if we repeal, when you're reviewing an application for a fence or whatnot, you're still identifying if there's a potential drainage easement?
Correct.
Is there an opportunity with the approval to provide prescriptions?
Exactly. That's what we've landed on. Our administrative policy is to craft a, an educational disclaimer is what we're calling it, that essentially lets people know about their potential liability should the improvement they make in a drainage easement cause damage to a neighbor's property. It lets them know that building within a recorded easement could lead to the entity that needs to maintain or get into that easement for its intended purpose might destroy those improvements, and they are not obliged to fix them, to pay the property owner for that damage. So we try to advise them of the risks of doing that, which, you know, I've found personally that you can tell somebody, hey, this is, you know, it's a really bad idea, it's a storm sewer drain, if you put a fence in front of it, you're going to push water on somebody's property. I've found that that typically isn't a deterrent. But we can at least hope that with education, some people will make maybe better decisions about what to put in there. Maybe instead of a privacy fence, they'll go for a wrought iron with some space in between it, or, you know, we can, you know, if they're going to do a shed, maybe we can talk to them about building it so it's got a little bit of, you know, it's built on stilts almost, so it's got a little bit of space underneath it for the water to run. Those are the kind of things that we can try to do as we work with individual applicants. So, that disclaimer is now going to be placed on every single permit we issue. It doesn't matter for a fence, a house, every permit we issue now is going to have that disclaimer, so.
That if you're building in an easement area?
Yeah, that these potential risks are part of that, so.
We could bring that up on screen if you'd like.
Yeah, we can definitely give you.
The disclaimer?
It's an educational piece that they have for the easement holder.
No, I would say that you would put that up on the screen for us?
Yeah, like you could see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if it's not just on my desktop.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, you already said it.
I'm sorry.
You better run across there, you don't get it?
I don't believe I can access it from here, but what I can do is, as after the meeting, I can send you a copy of it, certainly.
Okay.
But it's basically as I've described it, those two major points.
And then if there is a dispute with the neighbor or the easement holder, that's a civil matter?
Yeah, correct. We do not get involved, the zoning department does not get involved in those disputes. That's exactly what we tell them, that you are at potential legal liability in, you know, civil court, essentially. That's where remedy.
And I mean, if it's the township that needs to get in and do maintenance or repairs, I mean, we can pretty much just go in.
Correct. Yeah, we, you know, let's say it's a drainage easement, that we are responsible for maintaining, the township is. If we need to get in there, we don't have to contact them, we don't have to say, boy, it would be really nice if, no, we will go in, we will take whatever section of fence down.
I mean, that's the associated risk.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
And so would any other agency, Time Warner, Vectren, well, now they're all called different stuff, but AES and CenterPoint, yeah, so.
And just so you know, we've not had anyone go through the VZA process for a variance for anything in an easement. As soon as we realized this was the direction we needed to go, we had a couple of folks that were lining up to apply for variances, they were called and told, you can still apply for the variance, or if you can wait a few months, I can just straight up issue the permit. So I currently have six to eight that are on hold waiting for the outcome of this.
And this policy, or this request and kind of policy change also has been discussed with township administration as well, so it's kind of a, you know, it's, we were, you know, that's why we are comfortable telling folks, you know, one way or another, this is what we plan to do. It might take more time than we, you know, think or whatever, but that's what eventually will be our policy, so.
So how does this removal, this address one of the issues where the utility companies come in and charge the exorbitant fees, how's that address that issue?
Well, so, because the people will no longer be required to get their authorization. What, yeah, I mean, what we were saying was, if you wanted to build something in an electric utility easement, you were required to get Vectren's okay, and their process is to charge six hundred dollars for that look. So, without the need from us anyways to have that authorization, the applicant is no longer needing to go get that off.
So what's going to be the check and balance for them to make a logical decision?
Well, I think it's pretty much the same thing, isn't it, Max? If they build in a utility easement and the utility needs to get in and perform maintenance or repairs, they have the right, just as the township does as easement holder, to remove whatever's in their way, and they don't have to reimburse the property owner. I mean, when the permit's issued, they will, they're made aware that there's an easement. Prior to this language we're proposing, this educational disclaimer, I always make them aware that there is an easement. And before we had anything in writing on the permit, I handwrote on the permit that this serves as notice to the property owner that they're building in a recorded drainage easement. And as such, the following applies, which is, we need to do repair or maintenance, it can be removed at the homeowner's expense, and if it causes issues with a neighbor's property flooding, it's a civil matter and they could be taken to court.
So there remains a residual proactive element here in the service.
Yeah, we're going to, it's going to be on there. It's, and I've been doing that for ages. I've been handwriting. It was funny though, after this language was approved, it seemed like every fence that came in was in a drainage easement. I kept saying, same fence, I'm like, oh, please don't be in an easement, please don't be in an easement, and most of them were.
I mean, as we described to you when we were asking for this language to be created, most of the rest of the development, and most of the rest of the homes being built are in PUDs neighborhoods that have drainage easements along the rear of their property, drainage easements along both side lot lines as well. There's really not much new homes getting built that do not have drainage easements in at least one quadrant of their lot area, so we're going to keep seeing them. And to get to your, you know, to get to your original question, what's the check and balance? Unfortunately, it's not at the township level, it's at the county level. Should major issues be found with the drainage? We talked to the county engineer, who's overall responsible for stormwater maintenance, and she'll need to mitigate how she feels is necessary, so that's kind of the agreement we've.
It's her view that nothing should be built in an easement, it's there for a reason. But that's where we're at.
So what kind of requests have you gotten? Just curious that you have right now.
Oh, I just, mostly fences. I haven't had any, like, accessory structures. It's mostly focused on fences. One poor guy has a forty-three-foot-wide drainage easement from the back of his property line in, and he's got a smaller lot, so that doesn't leave him. I mean, they were offered the option, if you can take it out of the easement, we can issue it now. Most of them don't want to bring it in because it makes the yard smaller, and they don't get full use of it, so. They were banking on maybe getting a variance until we called and said, you know what? If you can hang on, we're working on changing the language again, so.
Any more discussion?
Can I say one other thing about the source of all of this? Stormwater management has been dealt with largely with either underground pipes or open ditches to detention ponds and retention ponds and water creeks and streams and rivers and so forth over the years. In the past, in the recent past, two changes have become evident from the developers. Number one is big houses on small lots. We have a lot of that in the township now. So it begs the question, where do you put the stormwater management infrastructure? There has to be some. In fact, arguably, a higher percentage of the land is being covered by impervious surfaces, the roof of the house. You have to do something with that water. At the same time, developers have learned that a pond ringed by houses facing out away from the pond gives them multiple parcels that they can advertise as having a water feature in the backyard. They charge more money for it. I'm not damning that practice, but you have to get the water to those ponds, and now you have to do it by going between houses. Whereas previously, with the ponds were out on the periphery of the subdivision, you could take it through pipes or so forth without actually locating the infrastructure on private property. Now, big houses, small lots, interior ponds, you've got a situation where, and combined with the unwillingness to put the stormwater under the street, which required until recently reinforced concrete pipe when it's under a street, that makes sense. But that's a lot more expensive than plastic pipe. So all of these cost implications were there for developers, and they figured out these ways to put stormwater infrastructure in place largely by locating it on private parcels. And the unfortunate piece of that is that there are a lot more easements, and though we haven't had to go onto anybody's property and destroy their shrub, well, yes, we have, not for a stormwater easement, but for an access easement. But we have had to go onto property, destroy plantings, relocate fences, and most importantly, I think, deprive property owners of the full use of their property. And that's the part that frankly would upset me if I purchased one of these parcels and then discovered that I couldn't use it, or couldn't use it all. And so, I guess all I'm saying in relating this story is that I want, I want everyone to know that there's a context for what we're talking about here, and that discussion about this isn't over. It'll take place at the county level as we reconsider subdivision regulations. I mean, we could take a hard-line position that says absolutely no public infrastructure on private parcels. And then that would force the design of subdivisions to be such that, they would be engineered differently. They would be engineered so that all stormwater could be managed on open parcels, managed either by the homeowners association or some other entity, but not subject to tearing someone's private little parcel apart, a tiny parcel. I'm not opposed to tiny parcels or big houses on them. I just think that responsible management of the stormwater is a complicated issue, and it's, we have yet to discover an effective way around it, and I believe that before it's all said and done, there's going to be some animated discussions at some of the plan review meetings as we begin to stick to our guns and say, no, you can't put that there. And the developers push back because of the cost, or the loss of parcels, because they have to, they find that they have to devote a parcel to a stormwater pipe and not build a house on it. For example, OSHA regulations require that a twelve-inch pipe that's six feet deep, if you have to work on it, you need a thirty-foot-wide trench, or you need thirty feet of space to get into there safely. That's a whole parcel, and that's how much money for a developer. So, now, as we look at those plans, we're not allowed to, by law, we cannot consider anyone's personal gain or loss, financial gain or loss, as we make our decisions. We're supposed to make our decisions according to what's best for the township, the health, safety, and welfare of the township. I would say that includes the workers who have to go into that trench and repair the pipes. So, you know, if stormwater infrastructure maintenance is to remain a part of the township's responsibility, we have to play an active role in this discussion, at least at the county level, if not at different levels. So, forgive me for going on at such length, but I think the context is important.
I think it is too, and as we move forward with growth and PUDs, we need to be aware of that. So do you foresee, in those planning meetings, is there anything that the commission can do to lobby for or advocate for more smart or responsible zoning codes related to this issue? Because we saw when HOPE TAF came, the precipitation numbers just keep going up, and this is, we wouldn't have entertained the zoning code change to begin with had Lori not been confronted by issues on the field and Max bringing it forth as a recommended change.
The short answer is yes, I foresee such conversations taking place. And I, but I do think that we already have the authority at the county level, and as we're working on new subdivision regulations anyhow, now is a golden opportunity. Now is the time for us to be making these comments at the county level. If new subdivision regulations are adopted by the Regional Planning and Coordinating Commission, sent to the commissioners and passed, approved by the commissioners, they're the law within the county, and if they make a statement about no public infrastructure on private property, then you have to draw your plans differently. How, as I alluded to earlier, the specifications for underground pipe are changing, and some consideration is being given. I don't know where this final decision is right now, but some consideration is being given to allowing plastic, a higher grade of plastic pipe stormwater under the roadway. Again, I don't know where that is, I'm not at all of those meetings anymore. I'm semi-retired. But these are, these are important for the future, especially since as the township continues to develop with the same speed and volume as ever, minus the tiny blip at the beginning of the pandemic, we're going great guns, and so you look around at the map of developable land in township, in Beaver Creek Township, and a higher and higher and higher percentage of it is near creeks, in floodplains, or wetlands, or other kinds of more sensitive areas where stormwater management is even more important than it is up on the plateau. So, it's a, there are problems that are going to be exacerbated over time as developable land gets developed.
We were also too, in case you wanted to see, we were able to grab the disclaimer. We had two versions that we came up with. The first is a little more verbose in terms of, oh, I guess, did we, okay.
Yeah.
This is the one that we sent to Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the one that we ended up settling on, which, as you can see, it really tries to drive the point home. You know, it can lead to potential damage to neighboring properties and drainage infrastructure. Why are they designed and engineered to bring storm and other surface water to these designated areas? That's their purpose. When they're impeded, those routes are impeded by whatever improvements, then that route can be disrupted, which means water is diverted into neighboring properties. Over time, that can cause damage. I mean, that's how the Grand Canyon was formed, you know? So property owners, and this is a big one, property owners may be liable in civil suits for damages caused to neighboring properties due to blocking drainage easements. That's very clear language that says you might be in court defending yourself if your improvement pushes water onto your neighbor's property. And then in addition, we talk about the possibility of those improvements being removed by the easement holder or controller in order to perform the functions of the easement. So, we try to put front and center. The really bad stuff is you might damage your neighbor's home or infrastructure. In addition, you could be at just personal risk of loss of, you know, funds or property. So, we tried to put, you know, the more important stuff up front.
How's this being communicated?
So this is going to be put on every permit that we issue.
So not until I ask for a permit?
Correct. Now, we hope to, so every, I think it's now every four months, is that correct? The InTouch magazine, we have an opportunity to kind of communicate with our residents, certain policy changes and whatever. We've identified this issue as something that we're going to communicate in our next, you know, InTouch article, is kind of a focus on drainage easements, but also, like Ed was saying, kind of the development into areas that have problems with stormwater, challenges with mitigating this kind of thing. So that's something that we plan on communicating in other ways besides this, but it should be very clear to anyone applying for a permit that this risk exists.
And part of this will be, especially if someone calls in and asks about a permit for a fence, you know, and I'll get the address, and while we're talking, I have the ability to look up and see if there's any easements. And if I identify a drainage easement, I can say, well, you've got a drainage easement on your property. We recommend not building in a drainage easement. However, if you should decide to do that, there are some ways you can help mitigate causing further problems for drainage by, you know, some of the stuff that Max said. Instead of a wooden privacy fence, maybe putting the iron or aluminum fence that sits up a little higher. Anything that might assist. I mean, and it's still their choice. If they choose to build an easement and they want to put the six-foot privacy fence, I'll still issue the permit, but they have at least been made aware of what can happen in future and what their liability will be. That's the, that's really all we can do right now.
So my question, is this the actual permit that you guys, that's up here?
Well, no, this isn't the actual permit. This was a document we circulated to the engineer to kind of, kind of explain what our policy changes are going to be and to give him an idea.
So where would that be located on the permit, that disclaimer?
So it'll be on the website. And it will actually be in the application, not only on the physical application, but also on the electronic application, the website. But they physically will have to initial it.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Because I want a signature or something that they, under that, showing that they've read it and acknowledge it.
It's a separate, it would be a separate prompt from the signature required for the permit.
For that, okay.
So then again, that's a...
And they won't be able to submit it, like with the other stuff, until they fill out all the designated areas, right?
Yeah, most of the pushes is going to the website application. But if we do have paper, people that submit the paper applications, it'll be a separate, you know, initial box that that should break. So again, it's just, it's an education piece. The property owners have the right to do that, but it's educating them that, you know, here's the potential consequences behind it.
I'm glad to hear it's going to be on the website. I think that's going to be important.
And truly, as Max said, a lot of the regular customers, the fence contractors, you know, all of the regular installers, we're going to reach out to them and say, hey, you know, this is, this is part of that application. So identify, make sure you identify that to your clients that this is going to be...
And kind of communicating the, you know, we're going back to this. There's obviously been some fence contractors that, you know, this new language came along and they were operating a certain way, and now they, now they have this additional step. So we'll be communicating back to our fence contractors that, hey, you know, the language is, or if it does, the language has been changed. And, you know, here's our new policy. Another chance to kind of say, hey, this disclaimer, we're going to require, you know, an initial or something that says, you understand this. You know, obviously with contractors, sometimes the breakdown is the communication between the contractor and the resident. I would say, in fact, I mean, we're dealing with a BZA case right now. Most of the issues that I deal with in terms of these kind of, you know, improperly done permit applications is because the contractor and the resident were not communicating properly, or they were not communicating properly with us. So we hope to kind of mitigate that where we can by just being more communicative.
So I have one other question too. So when you were speaking with the trustees, and in your language, you said that they had tasked you with either modifying the language or exploring alternative enforcement. So would you consider this, even though there's really no enforcement, where you're actually just having them read and sign it, there's no enforcement on our end? Would you consider that to be enforcement?
Well, I would say we met the explorer alternative enforcement criteria by having multiple meetings with the engineer and soil and water where we tried to hash this out. We tried to say, okay, okay, maybe it's not this form. Maybe, you know, they brought up that they were concerned that perhaps they might be liable in civil suits if they recommended, you know, a certain one yes and a certain one no. Then the one yes ends up having a problem, are they liable? That was one of the things that they brought up. But in those discussions, we had a couple of different meetings. We tried to say, well, what if we did it like this? What if we did it like this? And we were consistently told that the engineer's office was not going to perform the function of kind of case by case determining if improvements in drainage easements were okay or not. It was just not something she was interested in participating in. So again, that was in contrast to the letters of support that we had as we brought it forward, which was a little bit of a, you know, obviously it was a bit of a turnaround than we thought. But they make, we're not upset or anything. They make, you know, solid points. And we also know that, you know, people power is a thing right now. You know, it's tough to hire in the government. It's especially tough to hire in the engineer's office for the county. They've lost a, I can't remember Jeff's position inspector. One of their inspectors took another position, so they're down a person. So there may be other factors involved, but either way, we did explore some alternative enforcement options. The other one was to say, no improvements in any easements. We believe in this strongly, but I don't think, I don't think anyone honestly has the stomach for that. That's, that's a bridge a bit too far for us, so.
Okay, any more questions, comments? To make the motion to accept, or how would you like to do it?
Make a motion to amend the zoning resolution to remove section 19 dot 03 dot 10 in its entirety.
No, second.
Anything else? Will we do a count? Okay. Did you get it?
Yes. Do we have a second?
We did.
Bob, okay, sorry. Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
No.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
Okay.
Pull out my other case file here.
Ready to do your case number 760 dash 7. Just for clarification, the letters went out prior to, we followed all our rules with that? Okay.
Public hearing notice and letters were sent out within, actually a little bit before 10 days leading up to this as ORC requires.
Okay.
So if you're ready, I'll redo the...
Should we check? We've got a quorum, obviously, or we wouldn't have started. Is there, are there any members on the commission that feel they need to recuse themselves? Because we have a cloud number. Thank you.
So the purpose of this hearing is so that the zoning commission may review and act on a proposed major modification to plan unit development known as River West. The applicant for this modification is RSA Borat LLC, the owner. The proposed modifications include the realignment of roads, which requires a major modification according to Article 17 of the Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution. This action will be considered a zoning text. If you're ready for your staff report, this one's a little more...
I'm ready for staff report.
All right. So the applicant in this case, RSA Borat LLC, is the developer of the River West PUD, which was approved as part of zoning commission case number 760. Several sections of the River West PUD have been recorded, Scarborough, Bexley Hills, or something that you might be familiar with. A specific site plan was approved for the Villas at River West, which is how this section is referred to, in 2006. The developer ran into some unexpected challenges that resulted in a delay of development of this section of the PUD. We all know what happened in 2007 and 2008. The housing market had a rough time. So they were unable to move forward with the construction of these homes. Most significantly, these challenges required working within the requirements of the EPA and Army Corps of Engineers to develop near delineated wetlands. So there are delineated wetlands northwest of the proposed neighborhood. And so they had to also obtain EPA and Army Corps approval, which they did and is included in your packet. So this resulted in the developer modifying the original road alignment, which was approved in 2006. Essentially, and I'll show you on the map when we bring it up here. The Daventry Place Road looped all the way around. In the northwest corner of kind of that loop, there were discovered these delineated wetlands. And so they were not able to run the road across this section. So instead, they had to cul-de-sac both ends of that. Any road realignment is a major modification in our code. So even if they literally had to move a road one inch to the right, we'd be here doing a major modification proceeding. So again, Article 17 point 11 point 1 is the section that talks about why we, why we have to do this for road modifications. And again, zoning commission makes a recommendation to trustees who must finally act on the modification request. So the applicant has made two significant modifications, the original road alignment. The first is the inclusion of a new road named Daventry Cut. So let me, if you're, okay, let me bring up the map here and we can kind of take a look at this.
And we don't have the revised map in this package?
We, not in your, not in your packet. I got the revised map from the developer yesterday afternoon. I had sent your packets out Friday. So we can look at the revised map here. So, yeah, we'll zoom in a little bit for you. So here is what we were talking about with the, so this area. Can you let me zoom in?
There we go.
All right. So you can see kind of here, you see this little streamy feature that kind of runs through like this? That's a, that's a small stream that ends up in this area in this kind of, you know, drainage. Yeah. I mean, and that's what they're using it as. Yep. So they had to, they could not run a road across this stream. So they had to stub out into, or, you know, cul-de-sac out the two ends of the street. The other major mod is that they added this Daventry Cut kind of through road. You know, maybe the applicant can explain when you're talking to them a little bit more, but it's our belief that this is to kind of recover a couple of lots that they lost.
So there's no intent to build all around the cul-de-sac?
No, in fact, so the, this edge and this edge are the edges of buildable lots. And same with this and this. This is all a common open space area. I believe this area contains the lift station or will contain the lift station. I'm sorry, no, this area contains the lift station. So this is all open space that's just meant to be not disturbed because it's a delineated wetland. And again, the Daventry Cut is the other. We've also asked them, and it's, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but they had this road still named Daventry Place, even though it did not connect any longer. And we felt that was confusing, so we asked them to rename it. They've chosen Bordeaux Place as the new name for the road. The realignment of the loads, of the roads resulted in three building lots. Is that correct? Three lots were removed?
I think it was either two or three.
Yeah. I believe it was three, if I remember correctly, lots that were originally included in 2006 plan that are not included in this plan that results in a density reduction. So that's, in our mind, that's always a good thing. So any questions about kind of the two major road modifications before I move on with the staff?
Do you have the one of the previous submitted?
So unfortunately, that is only in a Mylar and only the...
Well, it came in our email, so, I mean, it was part of the packet that we...
Oh, you mean the one that was previously submitted to? Yes, I can definitely show you that. I thought you meant the one from 2006. So... So, I want to rotate this. So most of what you'll notice, and I'll kind of go over the differences here, is these cul-de-sacs have been increased in diameter to 90 feet, which is the fire code requirement, because they are long enough to be considered a dead end. So this is to ensure fire apparatus can turn around safely and with enough room, even if maybe there are a car or two parked in the cul-de-sac. The other major, and we'll kind of go over them piece by piece, but some of the other major changes is you'll notice in between some lots, and this kind of goes back to what we were previously talking about. There is some drainage infrastructure that was located on private, or on private parcels that was changed to be located on HOA-owned parcels. So this kind of leads into our next section, which is, we worked with the developer. To give you a little bit of background, how this came to us, we were notified by regional planning that the developer had brought this section in for the subdivision process, recording process, which starts with the preliminary plan being reviewed by regional planning. They, regional planning always confirms with us that any of these plans match our zoning code. Because if it doesn't, there is no need for them to continue to evaluate it. It would die, you know, at the local level, right? So when they sent us the plans, we took a look at it. You know, luckily, Ed, having the institutional knowledge, said, huh, I don't think this matches what we approved originally. And so we took another look at it, and sure enough, we saw some significant changes, enough that it would require the trigger of major modification in our process. Now, I firmly believe that's just a result of, last time any work was done on it was 2006, was when it was approved. And so when it was revived, I don't know, I don't know that this was anything other than just a long time had passed. And, and so luckily, we're able to kind of do what we need to do in terms of bringing this forward for major modification approval. And then it can move forward through the regional planning subdivision process, you know, which includes a pretty thorough review by the engineer, by regional planning, by sanitary soil and water conservation. You know, even certain utility agencies now participate in the regional planning. They call it the executive committee. So it goes technical review committee, executive committee, and then full commission. All look at it, and it goes through those three approvals. So that is the next step if we approve this specific site plan, major modification.
Max, you mentioned there's water drainage in private properties. Is there both private and HOA properties on this map?
Yeah, so any, anything labeled as a common open area is HOA-owned property. And so you'll see here that actually this is a, it's a storm sewer drain, and it's on common open area A's lot. So that is on HOA property. But then you'll see, for instance, this storm sewer is located basically on the lot line between these two parcels. It's located completely in private property. Now there's a drainage easement surrounding it. But still, in order to...
But the homeowners are all part of the HOA, so are they not?
Yeah, well, until, until it's turned over, it's controlled by the developer. But when the neighborhood is complete or a certain percentage complete, that's when the HOA is then turned over to the homeowners themselves.
So they will all own and be responsible for the common areas?
Sure.
You're calling it HOA property today, but eventually it'll all be private and jointly... The HOA will be responsible for, the homeowners will be responsible for all of that, will they not?
Yeah, they'll be collectively responsible for the maintenance of that parcel. For instance, in Bexley Hill, right next door, there's a common open area. The HOA is responsible for maintaining its, you know, mowing and things like that. So, yes.
But the township would retain responsibility for the actual drainage infrastructure underneath that?
Right.
The HOA doesn't, I won't say never, but the township is responsible for drainage infrastructure, whether that's an open duty or an underground pipe.
Max, what are the lots to the west?
These are, this is Scarborough neighborhood. You're talking about these here?
Yeah.
So this is the previously recorded... So this is the previously recorded, um, Scarborough section of the River West PUD. Uh, all these lots have been recorded, some have been built on. Um, so that's kind of what you're seeing here. It just kind of shows you in relation, and then if you go over to the east, you'll see a little bit of Vexley Hills as well.
Okay. All right. So delineated wetlands is only in that northwest?
Yeah, the delineated wetlands is up, is only in this northwest area. Now, there are existing wetlands that will be, um, a part of the configuration of the neighborhood. But again, we've been given EPA and Army Corps of Engineer approval for this design, so we believe that, um, you know, I know that sounds a little bit scary, right? Wetlands in the backyard, but, um, uh, we believe it's being done correctly and with the proper approvals, so.
Where's this actually at? Major intersection? I'm not familiar with the area.
Uh, Shepherd and, uh, what's the southern way? Actually...
Shepherd's off to the...
Yeah, so Shepherd here and...
To the east.
But...
That's Shepherd there.
Yeah, this is Shepherd Road.
Yeah.
Buckingham place.
Buckingham, yeah, and then...
That's the, that is the cross from the Vexley to...
And we can bring it up on GIS if it will kind of help you guys center it, so.
Maybe it's worth mentioning that, um, to call this major modification is really a matter of complying with language verbiage in our code. If you, is it really a major modification? Well, it, it complies with EPA input into the original design. It's not significantly different from what we had before. In fact, it's better, it's a better design than it was before, from a, from a stormwater management point of view, which is, as you can see that, the way that site looks right now, it's an important part of how that site can function is storms. It's all about managing stormwater. So, in, in, um, if you ask my opinion, I don't think it's a major modification. It's, but it, but it meets, it pulls the triggers in our code to qualify it for major modification and therefore it has to come before this board and the trustees. And that's because roads are relocated. We don't, we don't have the administrative authority to approve the relocation of roadways in subdivisions. Uh, and this body doesn't have, that, that, if it were a minor modification, it would go no further than this commission. But it's, but our code defines relocation of, realignment of streets as a major modification and that's why we're here. The other thing that I think is worth mentioning is that, um, the designer and developers have been real cooperative with us in responding to comments and working out, um, a few additional minor, minor issues and prior to coming here tonight. So, um, we've spent a fair amount of time on this, on this one, knowing how, how important this stormwater piece is.
So I have some process questions that I wasn't clear about when you were talking. Um, one is, was it the zoning commission's decision in two thousand six that, um, that they would need to involve the, um, EPA and the county, or the court of engineers in the decisions around the development of the, of the neighborhood?
I, I sincerely doubt it.
I don't think so. I don't recall that.
I don't recall that, and, well, I wasn't here in, in '06, but I, that would have been an unusual step for...
Right.
For the zoning commission. I think that trigger, Mr. Arnold, you might, uh, know how that happened, but I don't. I think the EPA was, the EPA last year was, shall we say, poking around Green County because Green County was identified as one of the, well, let me back up a second. Where, the whole state is going to be required to reexamine and probably most counties and jurisdictions will have to rewrite their stormwater management regulations. That effort is starting, it started two years ago at the southern part of the state and Green County and two others were selected as the very first counties in the state because coincidentally, there had been some violations in a different subdivision, not in, not in any of the Arnold properties, but some violations had been uncovered. And so the, the, the southwestern Ohio EPA was watching us anyhow. And so it doesn't surprise me that they took a look at all of the subdivisions that were, that, that plans were swirling around in and they saw these plans and said, no, we, we're not going to let you build another bridge across this creek.
So what I was, what I was really trying to get at is, we're not here today because of any error that the commission had made in that first PUD approval process.
It was, my sense is that it was proactive work on the part of the EPA. Now, I, I don't know whether you agree with that, Rob, but...
Yeah, it was, you know, what happened when we got to regional planning stage, it gets reviewed again and you had the farm pond. Farm ponds are, in the last few years, became, have become a trigger.
Right.
Um, they seem harmless, you know, when you start buying property anymore, you probably don't want farm ponds on them because if, if there is any, um, you know, stagnant water or anything like that, it, it presents a problem, even though it was manmade. You know, so what, what wasn't necessarily wetlands a while back can become wetlands.
Big shock.
But that's, that's where your situation arises. It, it changes daily, I mean, not daily, annually, you know? They'll come out and review certain areas and, and basically what wasn't now is. So that's, that's what, it, it was merely a change of the times.
And in Beaver Creek Count, Beaver Creek Township, all of this is further complicated by the fact that the ultimate outlet of all of these bodies of water is the national scenic river. So, um, you know, we want to take care of our problems locally and not get the National Park Service...
Right.
...checking this stuff out. So, you know, yes, we're rewriting the stormwater management regulations. Um, yes, we intend, as a county, we as a county intend to do a better job of enforcing them and that's what the EPA is, that's what the state EPA is looking at.
Okay. But we're not here because of any errors that we had made or any advisement that came out of, out of our offices, right? What about county permit errors? I mean, we're here probably because they said we weren't going to make any errors. Were there any county permit errors when it came to roads or anything like that?
No, final permits had been issued yet.
All right.
This, this set of plans hadn't gotten that...
Got it, got it. Okay. Do you guys have any more questions that you wanted to pass?
I just wanted to see the other map, we still didn't get to look at it. We were looking at the revised version.
Oh.
Okay, so here is the other map. Uh, would you like it zoomed out a little bit more or...
Yes, I just want to see the configuration and the changes to, because we just got this one today.
Yes, okay, so let me do a little side by side here.
Magic Max. Techno King.
Um, so, uh, let me see, just a little bit down here. This ought to give you a pretty good idea of, I mean, the basic shapes. Um, there, between what was submitted on, on, uh, I believe it was May twenty-fifth or, or a little bit earlier, sorry, uh, actually, we got the application on May seventeenth. This was the map that was submitted with that application. This is the map that, that was been reworked and we also have a, um, a list from Vanata of the changes that we requested and that were made. So, just to give you a quick rundown, they renamed Daventry, this road.
So those are two different maps?
Yeah.
So can you just kind of show map to map what are the changes besides, I mean, I get the, you're changing the cul-de-sac width, right?
Yes, cul-de-sac width. So I'll just, uh, real quick, go, go through all of them as they're listed here. Um, this road, Daventry Place, was turned into Bordeaux Place. It was just renamed because it was no longer connected. Um, the cul-de-sacs were expanded to ninety feet instead of, I think they were something like seventy-seven, something like that. They just needed to get expanded a little bit more. We requested and received the Ohio EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers, um, uh, their approvals, their approval documents. We asked them to include, and you'll notice it just a little bit, I think this comes from them working off the original, uh, you know, map that was drawn originally. It did not include some of the replats that happened in Scarborough. It's a very, it's a minor detail, it doesn't really affect what's going on here, but they made that change for us too, to kind of show what the parcels actually looked like surrounding it. They added a legend symbol or a legend, uh, to kind of, you know, we've requested this more and more to say, hey, look, while we have some experience, we are by no means experts in plan reading and, and so it would help us to kind of give us what certain dashed lines mean. Is it a sewer pipe? Is it a water pipe? Those kind of things. They, they were, went ahead and did that for us. Um, and then the big thing that we really appreciate is, and I'll try to show you where they are here, so if it's a, if you've gotten this, kind of this view side by side, I'm going to zoom in a little bit here. Um, of course, well, maybe not. Where's my zoom, there we go. I don't know what program this is running, but, so between lots two eighty-seven and two eighty-eight, that's still a little, it's a little small for me. All right, here we go. Where are you? I think they're up here.
Top, right?
Yeah, thank you. So two eighty-seven, uh, and two eighty-eight, this used to be just all, uh, it was just two private parcels that abutted one another. Um, and then there was a drainage easement in between them and between that is this storm sewer pipe that carries stormwater into this open area pond. Uh, they were able to kind of change the lot lines a little bit, remove a little bit of this open space, and now the drainage pipe itself is on HOA owned parks, uh, HOA owned parcel instead of on private property. That should help to mitigate a little bit some of the issues we were talking about, you know, getting in there to dig up the pipe up if need be to do maintenance on it.
So is that one example or are there others?
There are three total examples of them, uh, working with us to try and fit this where they can. We also understand that this was basically engineered out before it got to us. Um, it was already approved in two thousand six in a certain configuration, so it would be a little, I think we would be overreaching a little bit to demand that they completely eliminate any of the drains. As much as personally I'd like to see it and as a, as a township, I think that is our, our eventual goal, um, I don't think it's appropriate this time to require it. So we believe that them working with us on these three instances represents a, a great step forward for kind of developers' understanding, um, storm, the importance of stormwater management.
So I'm just curious, it's not in the numbers, but how, how many do you think are not being addressed?
Uh, more than three more. Um, probably, what would you guys say, six to ten, somewhere in there?
I would say that in the preliminary plan, I know we addressed three, six to ten would be fair, and as we go through more of a final design, we actually start to grade out this, these future sections, then we can play with it a little bit further. Um, it's kind of hard to gauge initially off of this and we don't want to lock ourselves into anything, as you said, so.
Sure. And one thing to note too is that, uh, again, we have to bring this forward to regional planning and, and they'll take a look at all those things. I can tell you that we get another opportunity there to try to voice these concerns, to see if at the regional planning level, we can get additional concessions towards that goal. Um, it's all, it's just going to be a constant effort on our part. Um, so, you know, yes, I, it would have been great if, you know, we could have got some more, I agree. Um, but we are really excited about this project.
And what you're showing is that underground piping?
Correct, yeah, it's an underground storm sewer pipe.
Did they also, um, make adjustments to fire hydrant locations?
We, we're dealing with that, it's, it's really minor in some ways.
So it was more a cost-saving suggestion, I believe?
Yeah. They actually had more than we, we needed, we're just adjusting them. That is not an issue, like, they have more than that, or they, more than they have on the proper distance.
Um, any other questions about the change? Those are the changes that were made from the ones submitted on the seventeenth and the one that we got yesterday. Um, are there any other questions about that or anything else really?
No, I'm ready to hear from the applicant if you all are.
I'm ready.
Well, actually, before that, the staff report has a staff recommendation written before receiving, fully kind of here, a clarified staff recommendation.
Thanks, yeah. So, so I'll read you real quick.
Thank you, sir.
Staff recommends the approval of the specific site plan contingent upon receiving a revised drawing of the site. This is our original recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
That addresses the issue raised during pre-development meetings. Um, we believe that those conditions have been met. They, we gave them a list of changes that we'd like them to address and they made all of those changes. The only one that they did not make was the slight adjustment to fire hydrant locations and that was more, again, a friendly suggestion that says, hey, maybe you have more than you need, you don't need all. It's great if they want to have more resources than are required. So, um, we believe that based on that, I can issue a recommendation of approval, having seen these revised plans. Um, so that is our, our formal recommendation is to approve this major modification or to recommend approval to the trustees, I should say.
But no further occasion.
I mean, we like to always put the condition on pretty much anything that passes through here, that it's also conditioned on, it's conditioned on approval by any other agency that might have jurisdiction, uh, including but not limited to Green County Engineer, Soil and Water Conservation Center, Tammy. Um, so that would be the one condition, it's kind of the one that, the normal one that we place on everything. Um, I just recommend that as a kind of a catch-all, but I do not have any specific conditions that I would, that I would recommend.
Any other questions?
So are you recommending your conditional approval or are you recommending approval?
I am recommending approval with the condition that is always placed on it. I guess, I guess it's a weird way to say conditional approval, um, but really just that we place a condition on pretty much everything that says, it's kind of a, you know, any and all agencies that may have jurisdiction at the, and, and any at the discretion of the community development risk department, approval is contingent on those approvals. Um, we can get, we can attempt to get that in leading up to the trustees meeting, but realistically, for a project like this, having spoken to the county engineer and regional planning just today, um, we're kind of told that it's premature for them to offer a formal opinion on these projects until it gets to the county subdivision level. We were able to get some provisional thoughts from regional planning and the engineer and I believe I, um, I can't remember if I said that to you guys, it was pretty late today that I heard from the engineer, unfortunately, it was like five o'clock. I do have copies here in your packets, um, so you can look at those if you'd like. Um, you know, I believe that their initial views are kind of what we're talking about. Um, you know, there's a little bit of concern about stormwater management, that's their, both of their main concerns, and it is something that they're confident they address during the subdivision recordation process. So, um, that's what I mean when I say, when we put that conditional approval on it, it's kind of like saying, and it needs to pass the county subdivision approval process, which is a fine way to say it too, if that's wording that, that you would, would prefer as a board. which is a fine way to say it too, if that's wording that, that you would prefer as a board.
Just now noticed the date on all these emails.
Like I said, we were, we were working with them until the last minute. When we can, we, we try to, you know, be, there's a phrase, working at the speed of business. Government usually can't achieve that. When we can approach it, we are very happy. When we can do it, obviously correctly, you know, not cutting any corners, still with some speed, we, we try to when we can. So, that's why we were working until just a couple hours ago, trying to get some.
Anyone else have anything they want to ask? Would you like to hear from the applicant? Ready? Okay.
I'm Rob Arnold. I'm a, I guess spokesman for the applicant. My sister's here as well. We basically kind of run the family development business together. Well, there's three of us. But anyways, I mean, this one is actually not a lot to say about it. I mean, we, we've been through the coals with EPA and, and the Corps of Engineers. You can imagine if you're, when you start dealing with those entities, they take out their magnifying glass and then put it under a microscope and look at every piece of, you know, the development that you're involved with. So, I think these guys did a good job of making their presentation and don't have a whole lot to add. I mean, we're, we ended up where we're at just because of the situation. And just to follow up with the conversation earlier, really, nobody had any idea, you know, the, the, the way that EPA and the Corps have changed their attitudes towards these parcels has just been, you know, pretty dramatic. Throughout Beaver Creek, I mean, we've, we've developed so many parcels up until this time, quite frankly, that, you know, probably had issues on them as well. But because they weren't recognizable and they weren't included in that, that information, at that point, you know, they just got developed. They got developed and the water got managed, and it got managed in a, in a proper way. I mean, engineers looked at it and managed it. So, you know, that's kind of the way that it happens. But nowadays, you just have to obtain all those approvals for that. I mean, there's just no getting around it. So, appreciate it.
Do you have any questions? Any questions?
Well, I have one. And that, it's difficult right now because we don't see the original site plan here. But my question would be if any of the lots are smaller than one of the original site plan?
No.
No, we had, we had all that criteria that was lot sizes could be smaller than this, your setbacks. None of that has changed.
I just wanted to bring this up in case we wanted to take a look at anything from the PUD language. But part of what makes a major modification would be a five percent or more
Correct.
change in the density or in lot sizes. And we reviewed that and we do not see that.
I was going down that path next, yes. So, you know, how this kind of appears to me is that, that y'all just ignored the original site plan. That's how it comes across to me. And that you've, you've attempted really to demonstrate some amends for that by hiring the engineer to do the survey and to cooperate with the EPA. That's how this comes across to me. So, bear with me while I, while I think through this a little bit more. I don't think underscoring the idea of reducing the density is really a concession of goodwill. I, I think it's a matter of trust and what...
I, can I interrupt? We did not ignore. We, we took that initial site plan to regional planning, and they in fact started blowing the whistle and brought EPA in. And that's what changed everything. We didn't change anything.
But there were roads that were different.
The roads became different after we changed the design based on what EPA wanted. Then we took it back and said, there was talk, and Ed, you can verify this. I mean, there was talk with Ed and also the, I'll be the attorney for the township, that if we made small modifications, it would be okay. And I think it just kind of evolved more than small modifications. We weren't trying to pull anything. I mean, Ed and everybody else has been aware of exactly what we were doing all along. There's no, you know, trying to pass something, you know...
That's what it comes across like to me. So, thank you for clarifying it. That's how it comes across to me. So, it's a matter of...
Totally was not that way at all. The only thing we've done, to be quite frank, is do what everybody has told us to do. I mean, and spend a ton of money doing it.
It sounds like it's been expensive.
And take a ton of time. I mean, honestly, that, that is all we have done. We never did anything other than that.
Okay. Okay, I just want to be fair. I want to be, I want, I want...
I appreciate that.
Like a really good working relationship.
I appreciate that.
And that came across to me like maybe that's not what happened here. So, forgive me for that.
Well, and I feel that we're not getting the whole story because we don't have access to the first, the ori... I, I mean, I don't even know what that original, the two thousand and six plan looks like. So, unfortunately, I didn't have a copy of that and we didn't get to look at it. So, I mean, I think that's why it's coming from that standpoint is we're absent that one artifact.
That's a piece of it for me, yeah. Yeah.
If you'd like, I mean, it would take me a couple minutes, but I can go get the Mylar, bring it down here and we can look at it.
I think that would be, I think that would be...
And you'll, and basically what you'll see, what we noticed, which was that Daventry cut did not exist on there.
It did, I know.
Yeah.
That looks like the major modification to me. And it looks like an after-the-fact thing. And if it's after the fact because there was dialogue that was happening, that's kind of different than looking at a commission and saying, you know, forgive me, I didn't follow the rules. Like that, you see what I'm saying?
I sure do.
Okay. Because I really, trust is important here.
Yeah, no, I agree. So, if you maybe want to call a short, I would say ten-minute recess. It's a pretty hefty, hefty short, bring it over here.
Is, is everybody good with that? Ten-minute recess? Yeah, it's fair.
I'll bring that back and we can take a look at the original Mylar, okay? Do you mind maybe coming over?
I just want to say thank you for moving drainage easements. I appreciate them. They are the bane of my existence lately. Well, fences in drainage easements are mine.
Mrs. Harris, it was worth naming, but I looked and I looked.
I had somebody in River Reserve, they said, hey, I'm going to tear this my backyard, and I'm, you know... No, you're not. So, I did direct them their way.
Well, I'll have to look at what they're planning on doing because...
I know, I told him, I said, you know...
I may not, I mean, there may not be a permit for me to issue for that, depending on what they're going to do. If they're going to do walls and stuff, maybe. We'll have to see. I'll have to see, and I'll tell them I'll have to see a proposed design so I get an idea. Yeah. Thank you. I had a woman call me at the colony over off of Factory.
See, you brought your laptop, Seth.
I'm putting in a fence tomorrow. Do I need a permit? I'm like, um, yeah? And she's like, I didn't even think about it till right now. And I'm like, you get the stuff into me, fill it out, get me the check. I'll do it. And I said, I'll come over tomorrow and do your inspection. You're okay. She's like, oh, thank you. She goes, I don't know why I didn't think... I know. They're, they're still, it's hard still, even after...
And material.
And material. We've got folks, I tell them not to pull the permits too soon because they're only good for six months. You know, if it's close, we had one guy that was maybe a month over, but he's been waiting on the material. And we said, you know what? We're not going to make you do another permit. We'll just, it's COVID related, so you're okay. But yes, but getting stuff out of drainage easements is wonderful.
Red flag, now it's all red flag.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I'll still tell them, you know, we don't suggest you build, but if you do...
I think she'll be fine. I think she'll probably be far enough up the backyard.
I'll take a look. Yeah, we'll take a look. We'll see, we'll see. Oh, my goodness.
It actually named you.
I know. I know.
Curious how he's going to destroy that.
Yeah, I don't know where he's going to put that. I don't know if he can drape it over the thing and you can all gather around and look at it or... Trying to remember how big it is. I know it's, I know it's big.
They used to have a...
Put it up on the screen and put a white background on it.
I, number five says that they'll provide, the applicant will provide that Mylar in eight and a half by eleven. It's like, it's like, are you kidding? Like transparency to put up? I think we need to change that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, when you get them so small, you can't, you need a magnifying glass.
Right here. It's in PUD something, something twelve, or major modification twelve, right? No, I'm sorry, it's right here.
I'm not sure, but the people that were sitting here, I think were from Bexley.
Location map.
Were they from Bexley Hill? Okay, so that's, okay, maybe that's what... Because evidently somebody put up an alarm in Bexley Hills that your stuff was going to just cause them all kinds of problems. We had two phone calls. The one lady said, well, there's seventy-five of these here. You're going to be able to...
Transparency.
Two. So, I don't know what got put out, but we're like, no, no. You know, and then we get, we get people that are like, wow, it's affecting so many people. You should mail it out farther than five hundred, you know, feet around them. We're like, no, 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 we're only required five hundred feet. We don't have unlimited postage funds. And we put it on the website. It's on the website. So, anybody that's really interested will take the time to go to the website. Yeah. Yeah. And we, we deflect stuff too. We're like, whoa, 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 wait a minute. You know, I had the one lady say, it's awful shady because Max was out Friday afternoon. He left because he, he had some time to use, and it was a holiday weekend. So, this lady just goes, it's awful shady. That's the only person I can talk to and I said, we're in Shady? And she goes, well, I, I didn't meet you. She goes, I could tell the change in that voice. And I'm like, really?
She's like, I can't believe my husband did the same.
Are you sure you want to go with that? And then she fell all over herself apologizing and I'm, I'm, it's okay. She said, you're just, you're going to be getting a long call? No, she was the last call. I had two. How was it? And I thought like Sam, Max has time. He's prepared to take time off in the holiday weekend. He has extra time. Because he knew you were going to call. He's not here. And I've got, so, I mean, I come and I do the minutes. But I am so far, I don't put the, I don't put case files together anymore. Tori and Max do that. They take care of the public hearing notice in paper, mailing out to everybody. So, people call and they start asking me questions. And I'm like, let me, let me just talk to Max. Because I'm like, I don't know what the heck I'm talking about. But yeah, I still do the minutes. Tori and Max have picked up because I'm doing inspections and code enforcement now, so. And that takes up a lot of time. I'm already getting the high grass calls. I've got one in River Reserve, the people behind her, she goes, their grass is high. So, I'll go out tomorrow and take it. Tori said, it's allowed. You can reach ten inches before we have to get after them. She said, well, what if it's nine inches? She's talking to Tori. What if it's nine inches? Does, does the inspector person go up and knock on the door and tell them it's getting close? And then she probably... And I'm like, no, we're not going. We're not going. You know, and it's like, they don't, they don't go out with their manicure scissors and the head lather, you know? And not everybody does it differently. They need to call the sheriff and say there is an unrestrained animal. That's, yeah. They do. It's the same thing with the people that complain about their neighbors. They don't want to leave their name. They don't want to leave their address. I'm like, well, I can call you back and let you know after I go out and take a look if there's something that's changed. Oh, no, I'll call you soon. You know, and I'm sitting there thinking, you may think you're anonymous, but if I have to send them a letter that says, yeah, we have a complaint that your grass is too high, and it is, you need to have... They're going to know exactly who called. They're going to, they know. Nine out of ten people know which neighbor it was that knocked on. They know. You may think you're, you're, you know, doing it on the fly, but they know it's you. They know it's you. Oh, my goodness. So silly. Well, can't you mean them do such a... I'm like, no, it's not a zoning violation. Have you ever tried talking to... Oh, we don't talk to them. And I'm thinking, that's your problem right there. You don't talk. So, um, some days, some days I just pull my hair. It's crazy. I, you know, I'm thinking, don't ever let me get, you know, I told Max, if I ever get to a point where I start... And I told my kids, if I ever get to the point where I start talking about those darn kids next door, it's, I'm just, put me down, please. Just put me down right now. You know, just put me down. I do, I live in an East Dayton neighborhood off of Smithville. The house was built in nineteen twenty-nine. I got creepy stairs. I've got the big wide baseboards and I love it. I love it. And I've got a really nice next-door neighbor. And I told her, I said, I'll stay here as long as you're here. Because she's like the only one I really know. Yeah, she's like seventy-five and she's got MS. Bless her heart, she got her second virus vaccine. And she's, she has MS, so she has difficulty walking anyway. The day after she got the second vaccine, she couldn't walk. So, they took her to the valley. She was in there for a week. And then they discharged her to, she wanted to go to St. Leonard's because she used to work there and she still knew a lot of people. So, they sent her there for rehab, and she's been there for over a month now. I've been getting her mail and I call her and, yeah. It's crazy, it's crazy. She's doing better. Hopefully she'll be home. She goes, I want to come home. The food here is terrible. And I'm like, hmm, I imagine. I imagine. I said, you let me know if you want me to pick up food for you. I'll drop it off. So, but yeah, it's a, it's a nice old neighborhood. It's, it's turning around again. There's a lot of older couples there and then they're selling off and younger people, families are moving in. Yeah, they go through cycles. They go through cycles, but I've been there sixteen years almost. Yeah, October will be sixteen years. I like it. I, I love it. It does. My kids are like, you've been there that long? I'm like, yeah. I bought that after my dissolution was finalized. Love it, absolutely love it. I bought it because I fell in love with, with the light fixture in the dining room. I'm pretty sure it's original to the house. I'm pretty sure it's nineteen twenty-nine. Yeah. I love it. I love it. So, it needs some, need to do some updating. A little old lady, I bought it off of Bless Her Heart. I think she papered everything that didn't move. And it's plaster and lac. And she put the vinyl paper, so I've got to get the vinyl part off and scrape off as much of the other stuff as I can so I can, I'm just going to put up a nice neutral background paper. so I can, I'm just going to put up a nice neutral background paper all over, rather than try to take it all off and paint it. I don't think I could. Too much, too much. Oh, yeah, we got to call the meeting back to order. It's nine. Are we, are we still on?
We should be.
Okay. I didn't know if it got stopped or not.
All of your conversations were being recorded.
Well, thank goodness, we didn't talk about either of you while you were gone.
So what we have here, and this is why it was impossible to press scan and replicate.
You guys can up too, if you want. Up to you. Feel free.
And yeah, this is Scarborough. This is what was submitted for Scarborough Phase One.
So this is their, this is the community space where both, these are the cul-de-sacs that we talked about just now. I got my beer.
So, right here.
You can go up for all of it if you want to.
I mean, you can see, you know, obviously the loop, right? There's some changes from the original, but they, they represent a very. And again, this was, this was like the, okay, so this was the very preliminary stuff that was submitted. Unfortunately, any.
So you said the map fourteen thousand six.
Yeah, you're just saying that the density decrease from the changes they recently made, I mean, obviously they increased substantially. Yeah, yeah. Right. However, the, when we checked the overall density of this against the reservation. Yeah, it is a decrease from.
Well, we wanted to thank you, staff, for getting that. Thank you for giving us the time to look at that and, and recognize the changes. You know, when you go from point A to point B, delivery does change. I mean, it, we see that. Do you all have any questions or thoughts about what has been presented? No, not this time. Okay, so in an attempt for establishing trust, I think that the ownership is on us now to make certain that we follow the rules set forth in our zoning codes. And, you know, I always say this, remind you that we're volunteers, just doing the darn best we can, right? And so sometimes we have to stop and ask the staff the questions or the view the questions as we start to make the decisions. So what we've been doing of recent is going through each of the, it would be the major modification requirements, correct? We all on the same page with what we would need to be doing? And I believe those start on like page one nineteen of your, of your books. Major modification, it looks like Max started to talk about those on the increase of the five percent. You all went through this and feel very good that we, that it's in, in the space that it is. So it directs us to the specific site plan application at seventeen point oh seven point five. And it appears to me that all of that was followed. Do you guys want to take that bullet by bullet or leave it at the fact that it's pretty much been followed? The only thing I didn't see was point five where there was a eight and a half by eleven transparency, which I think we might want to update our zoning code on that.
We found in the past month or two that this article does need some update.
So I think that's, that's fine. I, when I get to point eleven is where I start to question things. Where are you guys?
Just here, engineering studies.
Engineering studies and plans. And you spoke to that a bit, Max.
Sorry, where?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know the page number. One twelve. So I, I feel like everything up to item number eleven is appropriate. And did?
Okay, got it.
Did you, Seth? Or do you want to do a, wait, my point?
Oh, for that specific site plan application? Staff feels that they had that, then we'll get with that.
Okay. Yeah, we got to, to eleven. And that's kind of where, at least I got to eleven and I'm still a little bit questionable on process for engineering studies and what you found out today.
Sure. So, so what they really mean by engineering studies is what we have here. An engineer who took, you know, took a look at it and essentially presented a plan that they would put their seal on. It does include, you know, where the, so we'll go back to this. Sorry, I think I just closed it. Street improvements, right? That's what we see. Nature and extensive earthwork required. There's a topography map here that shows what the topography will need to be in order to, to meet that criteria. So that's what we're talking about. Location and size of water sanitary, sewer and storm drainage control systems. That's what we saw with all these different dashed and dotted lines. And these black dots represent catch basins and other sewer mitigation.
I follow that that's been presented to us and that that's been established. My question is in process, just to clarify, that, that that is approved then at the county level? It's, it doesn't have to go through us? We don't have to wait for something from the engineer, the county engineer to tell us what her views on this study was?
Right. And so the way, and after talking with the engineer today, talking with regional planning today, again, I was, and it's kind of reflected in your, in the emails that you were shown, this is a bit premature for them to give their final opinion because as it goes through the subdivision process, they do exactly what we do. They say, okay, we'll meet with you. Here are our concerns. Rework your drawing. Bring it back to us. And they might do that a couple of different times before they come back with a final plan that is acceptable to the engineer and sanitary and regional planning, all these different bodies. So I don't believe that number eleven could be construed as requiring the county engineer or any other agency to voice approval of these plans. You, as the board, have the option to request whatever information you feel is necessary to make a decision. We have to balance that against the applicant's rights to develop their property, their right to due process. So as long as it is a reasonable request, that is something that you have the power to do. It is staff's opinion that that for, to meet number eleven, that requiring a, an approval by the county engineer at this phase would be premature.
That's all I wanted to make sure I understood.
Even though there was an email that said, I mean, from Stephanie, that if we wanted official comments, that they need more time?
Basically, she's saying it has to go, like, it has to go through the official process of going to the technical review committee and then the executive commission and then the full commission in order for them to have all the steps necessary to produce their, their formal professional opinion on it. It has to go through those steps for them. Because they get to talk with, it's not just the engineer looking at it by herself. They're in a room with sanitary, the different utilities, the developers. They're trying to bring in builders now too because they've noticed that sometimes the disconnect is between the developer lays out a site plan, they turn it over to the home builder who just ignores it, bulldozes different areas because that's what they think they need to make the house work, right? So we're trying to bring in, I say we, the county is working with us to try to bring in everybody who might touch this plan and who might act on it to the planning process to kind of fulfill these goals like we lay out as well. So I don't know if that answers your question quite enough or.
That answered your question. You were the one that asked. Yeah, I don't know. I just, I feel like this is just, I mean, since we literally just got the revised thing at nine o'clock, which I didn't even read my email until like later on. I just, I mean, I just, it took, it's a, it's a lot of stuff to take in and, you know, and the amount of time that we had, all of this information handed to us. And not to mention, the email information in the packet was after the fact, so we just literally got it when we got here tonight, so. That's my biggest concern is that there hasn't been, I guess, enough reviewed on from that side of it.
Well, let me ask you, the green counter review and approval process, that's separate and distinct from this?
Correct.
Regardless of whether we hold it up for that or not, that's still going to happen, is it not?
Actually, I wouldn't characterize it like that. What started this whole process was them, regional planning submitting to us for, they, they submit to zoning, to fire, to roads and say, does this match with either your existing zoning code or in this case, what you approved for the specific site plan? And we come back and say, yes. And without that, they will not move forward with this process because they're, they would not approve something that we at the local level wouldn't allow, right?
So we're an input to them. They're not an input to us.
It kind of works both ways. It's, it's complicated. It's a complicated relationship. Regional planning for townships is a Ohio revised code requirement. Their, their advisement, which is why you typically see in your packets a, a letter from regional planning saying, you know, here's our thoughts on this particular thing. Why it doesn't rise to that standard for this is because it's a modification and not a new specific site plan approval process. So it, it gets to skip the regional planning part because that was all handled during the original approvals. So in a sense.
Part of the reason you can't come in with all of your engineering ahead of time is because you got to wait till it gets approved and then the engineering follows. And as, as you take this to the board, then everybody from the county that is in, it's their field of expertise. Sanitary looks at the sewer and water, you know, soil, they look at your drainage. And then Stephanie, if there's, you know, roads that's involved with her, she looks at the roads. So each entity looks at it at that point. But for us to go get all the engineering ahead of time and then come to you and you go, hey, you know what? We don't like it. We couldn't do it. I mean, it has to start with a plan and then get followed up with all of the, you know, with basic engineering to say that all this will work. And then it gets followed up with the specific engineering for each thing as it gets approved. That, that's kind of the way it works.
Yeah. I mean, we, we're dealing with a, we deal with a thirty thousand foot view. When it gets to regional planning, they have a cross section of every pipe that's going to be installed in there. They have a, you know, a cross section view of how deep it's going to go in relation to the road and how it's going to interact with other pipes. When we're talking about specific engineering, we're talking about tables as big as that page full of the curve ratios and every, you know, curve in the street, okay? So that is not, I think, something that, A, our staff is capable of reviewing with any expertise. We might have a passing familiarity with certain aspects of those. But we certainly, I, maybe I don't want to speak red, but I know I cannot look at a curve chart and give you any kind of meaningful interpretation of that. So that's why we have to at some point rely on experts in their area of expertise to say, we'll hold it up if it needs to be held up. You guys tell if this, if, if this use of the land, this density housing development is something that is acceptable to you. And we will follow up with input as to whether the kind of pipes they're going to use are okay. That, you know, that's, that's kind of the nature of the relationship. It's, it's a back and forth.
And to be clear, they're not asking you to hold it up.
Oh, no, absolutely not. We noticed the discrepancy between what was originally approved as we were trying to check against. Because we saw, it was last approved in two thousand and six. Got to take a look. You know what I mean? None of us were around when that was approved, at least in the staff level. So had to take an extra look to see. And we noticed that there was a difference. So we said, hey, region planning, you guys can't move forward because we can't give you our zoning approval. And again, I, I truly believe, after speaking with the developer and the engineer and regional planning, that this is really a case of, you know, it got brought forward in twenty seventeen and then they had to, they had to bring, you know, the EPA kind of said, oh, we'll hold up now. We're, we're running the show here. And so that triggered a bunch of changes. It's my understanding that there was some discussion of whether or not this would rise to major modification level at that time. You know, it didn't move forward. So now that it did move forward, I took a look at it. I made my determination of that it did rise to major modification status. And so that's why we're here before you.
Right. And that, and that's all I wanted to do is make certain that I understood the process on the engineering piece, that if we are not overlooking that, that we are doing it as we are required to do it.
I, I believe that, yes.
Then the issue on number twelve was the fire hydrants. I think we've addressed that. There are more fire hydrants than we have dogs right now, right? Okay, so we're good with that. Then we move into the seventeen oh seven dot twelve, right? Is that, everybody following where we're going with this now? And I don't know the page number of that.
One sixteen.
Thank you. It tells you you have to go back to that piece. Okay. So I was good with all of those until I got to number three, which is just my favorite one to hone in on, which is the proposed development promotes health, safety and general welfare. And so because the EPA has been a piece of this, what might we need to consider as we make a recommendation, one way or another?
I would say that you would want to look at the EPA approvals that were presented in the packet here. So it's a section, it's a section four oh one approval, water quality certification.
Okay.
What the EPA, and again, this is a little over my head in terms of the, the technical pieces of it, but what I'm to understand is that this essentially means that the proposed development will not negatively impact the water quality of surrounding water infrastructure, natural, man-made and what have you. That's at the very base level of what we're talking about here. You know, the folks at the EPA, again, are, have a specific expertise. You know, the folks at the EPA, again, have a specific expertise. It would be, in my opinion, to second-guess them with staff's level of expertise would be unadvised, because we don't have the ability to turn around and look at what the EPA did and dispute it. We just frankly do not. So, that's why we have to rely on their expert opinion.
So, as we rely on their expert opinion and what they've given to us, knowing that it seems to be an ongoing thing, but yet, we don't want to burden the developer, right? We, what makes them go away, guys? What's, what? Have you, what, it seems like there could be a little bit of a-
It's not about what we want to do, it's about putting the regulations in place that enable us to do what we want to do. It's, we can, we can ask, and right now, and the developers comply with some of what we ask for, but some of it they don't have to. Someday, they will have to, you know, I mean, these rules are, the regulations are, the stormwater regulations are living document, and they, so they change from time to time. And it's not fair for us to try to oppose something, a regulation on someone that's not really written down anywhere, just because we've learned new information, or have new engineering techniques, or understandings, or because another agency has stepped in and said we have to. We can't, we can't, and by we here, I mean, at the county level, basically. I'm I'm thinking of those plan review meetings at Regional Planning and Coordinating Commission, the ones that have the detailed engineering. I I just don't, there's a fairness principle that that works here. We can't impose a rule in the middle of an engineering process. The rules that govern the approval of this plan are those that are in place now, not those that we anticipate will be in place even a month from now, much less two or three or five months or a year from now. We think we know where we're going, but we're not there yet, and so, so there, what you have is-
We also have an unfinished product, but we also have an unfinished product.
Not according to current regulations. You know, according to future regulations, maybe, maybe. We don't know, but we can't govern according to future regulations.
Okay.
No. It's it's like if if someone were to come in with variance requests, we, BZA would have to make that decision based on what our zoning code says today, not on what we anticipate changing it to a month or or a year from now. We're learning. We're all, we're all learning constantly.
Right, we are, but I think what I got the message out of this was trying to collaborate for the, in the best, for the best drainage possible. I mean, that's where we've been with it, right? And so, do the engineering studies give us that, or do we have to take a look at EPA follow-up? Are you follow, you follow what I'm trying to get at?
I I do.
This plan does look at the EPA follow-up. That's, that's kind of why we're here. Because of, because of the EPA input, roadways had to be changed, drainage plans had to be changed. And and now, and and because those changes were made, it triggered provisions in our PUD code.
It's a direct result of they're taking action in response to the EPA.
It required a major, it was, it triggered a major modification here. And and that's, that's why we're here, is because we are in fact responding to what the EPA had.
Okay, well, I was just hung up on criteria number 3 under 1707 point 12. And that, you know, it's, it's the trigger one, you know, it is the trigger one.
I mean, it's a, it's a rather subjective and nebulous criteria.
It is, so we all have to live with whatever it is that we decide. Is there a, you know, is there a recommendation that as we go forward, we might want to consider telling the trustees with regard to this topic?
Sure.
That's all I'm saying, like, you know, some sort of an ongoing assessment until the final lot is sold. I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know.
It's interesting. I think I see what you're getting at, some form of, you know, site analysis, or maybe even monitoring by staff as development occurs, to just make sure that-
Periodic, nothing, yeah.
The goal of of this, the protection of these wetlands, or whatever, is actually being achieved.
Right.
I don't think that's an unreasonable, now, I could be, I could be wrong in our ability to impose that condition.
Yeah, that's what-
Well, I don't know that we can impose it. Right, that's, I want to be careful, because, you know, there's already been enough effort put forth, but in the same vein, it's something that we could say to the trustees, you make that decision, right?
Sure, and and what we could do is link that maybe to the county agency that would be responsible for that in the first place, soil and water conservation. You know, we have a good-
Or the Wetlands Association, or somebody, I mean, I-
I would be hesitant, don't get me wrong, the Wetlands Association is a great organization, they are a not-for-profit, and they are biased. I mean, frankly, it's impossible for them to not be biased. They are literally a, an Eric, that's for preservation of the wetlands. I would suggest it be a, the entity that is responsible for that jurisdiction. You know, we got a good working relationship with Ken Milton, Soil and Water. I've had him come out and look at different problems, you know, just drainage problems caused by fence, or, hey, we had a concern about the Mosher plant over there, just south of 35, whether or not the drainage was done properly. Property owners behind them thought drainage was running off their property into theirs. Ken came and looked, we did a, it took us about, you know, two hours to really investigate that, and he, so he's, he knows what he's talking about, and he has every intention of, you know, kind of coming when we call, if we think we have issues. So, I think it's certainly doable to make a recommendation to the trustees that we strongly encourage, I don't know about requiring, we could, we could talk about it, to that Soil and Water Conservation conduct regular inspections or regular investigations, checks.
What does that have to do with-
Well, it, so, if Ken came around every three months, say, as they were grading the site, and took a look around specifically the delineated wetlands area, to make sure that A, builders, site graders-
But if the county's gone through the EPA and has got their approval on it, and they, they have, there's a problem-
And there's going to be county inspections, there are going to be- Yeah, I I agree with you, that that is, that is the way, that's the current process that's in place now, is that is not the township's responsibility to ensure that that building is being done correctly.
That's all I'm saying, is I just don't want the county to become another police agency. If they've gone through and got approval from the EPA, the township trustees, design board, or whatever, we don't need another agency from the county dropping by every once in a while to check to make sure that, whom, what authority do they have to check? That's my question.
They had something they wanted to say.
Just FYI as well, the EPA will be re-notified whenever construction occurs on this project via NOI, and during that process, we have to submit grading plans to them, they'll ask for the 401, the 404 that we previously provided, all where this is tributary to, well, or disturbing and everything, so they'll be real aware that when the NOI has done that-
So, there's already an ongoing piece to that.
And that's something that we generally do, that's, it has to be done with any project, but this won't have a special red flag with them, because it has the 401 and the 404 that will be attached to it.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that I didn't overlook that particular regulation.
No, I just wanted to add that piece of information, because I thought that's what-
The only other thing, to put everyone out of their misery, and and that, I think, will have the answer to this, I probably already know the answer to it, is number 13. You have to take all of this now, that, like, all these, the maps and everything have to be re-approved and sent forward. That's part of this process. Did your covenants change?
No.
I don't see, you know, there aren't hundreds of people here ready to complain and carry on, so, yeah. That last meeting, yeah, so there hasn't been any negative impact on the, on the neighbors' perceptions of what they've purchased and their values and all of that stuff?
I can just, real quick, speak to that. I spoke with a resident who lives roughly right here, who called in when he got the, so this is the Scarborough area, much larger lots.
Like, where are you?
Like, where are you?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I feel like I'm taking a driver's ed test.
But, I mean, these are significantly larger lots than what's proposed in in this area. You know, when he got the notice, you know, everyone's mind goes to the worst place. He was asking, you know, what is there gonna be, gravel pit, what is there gonna be, a bunch of apartments? He said, no, look, here's what you're getting is, you know, single-family housing still. He said, okay, I knew, I always knew there was gonna be houses behind me. It's very important to hear him say that, because that means, A, that the developer's communicating that to protect, to buyers and potential, you know, residents. And B, it shows that, you know, people, you kind of gotta be okay with it. I mean, unless you want to buy the property behind you and hold it empty, you have to be okay with that there's gonna be homes buying, you know?
For sale.
Yeah, exactly, you buy them. So, I hope that kind of answers the, you know, the question of whether or not there's maybe a potential perception or a problem with residents of Scarborough.
Ann?
And and just one more thing, kind of touching back on what we talked about at the beginning of the night. On our record plan, Green County has been requiring, but I lingo suggests, you know, no fences, no structures, no anything can be built, and drainage usements. And so, that will also be something that we need to provide as part of this plan to help protect all the living, the rural homeowners. And that will also have the ability of the homeowners to make sure that I can-
Well, that's good, because as we were just talking about, you missed that whole ride before, so, good to know.
Well, I'm satisfied. Do you all have any questions on those points that you need to discuss, question?
I would like to discuss 400 points.
You just whacked me with a hammer. All right, well, it's time for motion entertainment.
I'm gonna treat him lingo. Where's Heather?
Maybe Bob do it, Bob's been missing. You've been, you've been missing.
Hi, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the specific site plan, or the revised site plan that was received, subject to any other agency that approvals they might have jurisdiction.
Perfect.
Yep, I'm just jotting down here. Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We'll reach out to you here in a little bit, when we've got a resolution drawn up for your records, okay?
We'll go home, go to bed.
And we'll tell you about that, that's for the trustees, okay?
I didn't say much anyway, didn't I?
Make sure you're timed.
She snuck out on you. She was always smarter than me.
Where'd you park?
I actually parked over here, so-
It might be close to you, go that way, yeah.
Look at that first. Thanks.
All right, you guys, do you have minutes?
The only minutes I have are the ones I sent out to everybody from the April 15th. That was the first meeting for 8:21. And I don't, I didn't, I was out sick yesterday, and I didn't think to send them back to you guys again today, so. If you're not comfortable, I mean, if you don't remember.
Well, we wait for John to come back for that.
Yeah, we'll wait for him, because he's there.
Oh, yeah, that might be, yeah.
No, you were there.
It's very obvious, yes.
Yeah. No, you wouldn't have been able to do anything, yeah. We would have sent you home.
But then just give them more-
Yeah, we, I mean, we would have had to literally send you, you would have had to just go home.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, not hearing any more business. You see any on your agenda?
I would like to make a motion for us to have a break in July. Are we allowed to do that?
I don't see a break for you guys coming anytime soon.
We worked in the whole pandemic. People were off, you were not.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
I promise you, if there's no business, we won't hold one for a fight. Yeah, absolutely. But I expect there to be business. Sorry.
How would that work anyways, too? Because that's like, are we doing it the, because that's the Fourth of July weekend, so would we meet that Thursday before?
Or if you want, since it's the holiday, they could, you could move to, move the meeting to like the next, the following Thursday.
So, your guys' is, your guys' meeting would be actually Thursday, the first of July?
Yeah, and that's the Fourth of July weekend.
Okay, so I, I see, so we're worried that maybe some of us will be on vacation, or or not, okay, gotcha. At that point, what you would want to do in this meeting is make a motion to change the date of your next scheduled meeting to the date that you guys select.
I would like to make a motion to change the date of our next scheduled meeting from July 3rd to-
First.
Oh, July, no, from July 3rd, right?
This is June, sorry, this is today.
It's the bottom of the timeline.
Oh, so July 1st, okay, July 1st to July 8th.
Does that work for everyone else, July 8th?
Can I get a second?
We actually have a swinney from the first.
Okay, then.
Oh, wow, that's perfect.
Can I get a second?
So, we need a second, we need a second, then.
We need a second, we need a second. Second, I want a second.
Steph is gonna second? Okay, Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
We may or may not need you, I don't know. Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
You can. I can't guarantee you, how am I counted?
Mm, you're looking at mine. Nope, she's available, she says yes.
So, we'll just say yes, and if I can't be, I'll just be honest and say I can't be.
Okay.
Because it's not gonna end.
We're good.
So, in that case, sorry, we got the vote. What I'll do then is, I'll need to send out a, probably a public hearing notice, just because it's not a regularly scheduled meeting. And then I'll also kind of let you know, you know, how that goes, basically.
Can I sit right now? Is there any business forward to drive you?
Well, we've been trying to get the omnibus resolution in front of you guys to look at, and to make a motion to bring to regional planning. We wanted to have that work session later in the, later this month as well, because we didn't get kind of the time that we wanted to work on it. I know that you guys had a a quick consensus that there wasn't some, you know, that it was mostly minimal changes, but really, it's not. I mean, there are some grammar and spelling changes, but there are some substantial policy changes as well, and so I think I would be more comfortable, at least if 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 we don't need the work session, then at least some sort of, you know, an email from each one of you with any concerns you might have, something that that shows that we looked through it and we're comfortable with with all the changes that are, I know, it's a lot, because I wrote it, so I get it.
I don't mind the work sessions, I would just prefer to not start at 7:30. I mean, if we could start a little bit later, because I really don't want to go until 11 o'clock at night.
Do you mean, sorry, earlier?
Earlier.
Okay, yeah, I would love that, too. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, yeah, I would love that, too. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm fine with that, so...
Does that work with all the other members?
Yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever ti, earlier time works for you guys.
It's John we have to worry about, you know, too.
Yeah, 'cause I know we've got some coming from work.
I thought you said though that last time, that, I mean, like, six o'clock, what time did we do that? Didn't we do it earlier? Or did we just tell me it's at three?
I suggested that years ago. There was someone that couldn't do it.
Was that you?
No, it was the guy that, he was only on...
He was only your day.
He was cool, 'cause he had so many kids. He was...
Oh, Bendenwald. Jason. Yeah, and it wasn't until you said he had so many kids that I realized who you were talking about.
Let us remember that we are still being recorded.
So, it's my understanding, and I can confirm this with Dawn, that you do not need to, uh, announce a work session in one of these meetings, so we can...
That's fine, so we can talk about it.
We can continue this conversation. Be an email. I'll, I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow and get your opinions.
Well, early, yeah.
I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
A second.
Oh.
Who is that?
You didn't...
I turned off my...
Did you make the motion, or are you entertaining a motion?
I didn't make the motion.
So you first did.
I would like to first the motion, too.
You seconded, did you?
Bob?
Okay, now we're official.
Okay, let's do it official here. Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
I'm outta here.
Mr. Geist? Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yeah.
We can find some way to find some food, too, for those work sessions.
Yeah, we can figure something out.